Meeting of the Board of Education for August 15th, 2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As people might notice, Director Sparza Brown is absent this evening. In addition, so is Interim Superintendent Awad. And third, in place of the PPS ombudsman this evening, we have, we're going to have Senior Board Manager Roseanne Powell here available, as she always is, to assist any member of the public who may need additional assistance. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I'd like them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language that they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should anyone, should someone need assistance.
Hello, my name is Lucia Cabrejos. I'm the Spanish interpreter. Mi nombre es Lucia Cabrejos, soy intérprete en español, y voy a estar sentada de al fondo.
Hello, my name is Bullet. I interpret for Somali.
Thank you, and welcome to our board meeting. Nope, sorry.
If you want Russian translation, please call me.
Thank you, welcome to our board meeting. Before we begin our public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off. Board members will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board manager, Roseanne Powell, will follow up on the issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for cooperation. And now I'd like to ask Ms. Hewson whether anyone has signed up for public comment.
We have three, and our first two speakers are Marty Stockton and Elizabeth Israel-Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do I need to state my name, or? Marty Stockton.
You can just go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm a parent to an incoming Beaumont Middle School sixth grader with dyslexia and an Alameda Elementary School fourth grader. I'm a co-founder of the Alameda Dyslexia Community. Please see the attached event flyer. Representing 16 families and an ambassador to the Decoding Dyslexia Oregon. I want to express deep appreciation to Portland Public Schools for coordinating on Senate Bill 612 training opportunities and the teachers that have made up these training cohorts this summer. Related, I am providing public comment on four time-sensitive calls to action before PPS this school year. In February 2017, I learned from the Office of Teaching and Learning that there was a implementation plan for Senate Bill 612. Since then, I have asked the Office if the implementation plan was developed through a public process and whether the implementation plan was approved by the school board. I have not received clarification on these two questions for seven months now, nor do I believe that the implementation plan is as thorough, equitable, or clear on how to serve students with dyslexia. Furthermore, this posted implementation plan is now out of date with the 2017 adoption of Senate Bill 2003. The first call to action is for Portland Public Schools to establish a public process to review and develop a PPS dyslexia legislation implementation plan in response to both Senate bills and to be approved by the Portland Public Schools Board. The second call to action is for PPS to address policy gaps and inequities in the online version of the current Senate Bill Implementation Plan for PPS, as well as customize a publicly-vetted implementation plan that reflects PPS characteristics, needs, and values. Moving on to the K-5 Language Arts Equity-Based Balanced Literacy. This year, PPS budget approved another phase of only 10 additional schools to incorporate the adopted curriculum for the school year. This means a total of 20 out of 50-plus schools will be using the new Equity-Based Balanced Literacy. My concerns are as follows. The phasing is already a year behind schedule for the 30-plus remaining K-5 through K-8 schools. Clarity is needed on whether Project RE, the curriculum identified as the Tier Two Intervention Pilot, is part of the formal literacy adoption. Transparency is needed on why Project RE, if it is the adopted Tier Two Intervention, is not being phased to all K-5 and K-8 schools immediately to support all schools or all students with dyslexia. Call to action number three: PPS to ensure the provision of free and appropriate public education by supporting teachers and providing instruction that is systemic, explicit, evidence-based to meet the educational needs of students with dyslexia through district actions and procedures required by state and federal law.
Given that your time is up, can you sort of summarize? And I think you've submitted, you had sent public testimony as well.
I did.
Great, thank you.
One more call to action.
Okay.
PPS Board to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month by an adopted ceremonial resolution. Los Angeles, the largest school district in California, has recently also adopted such last year, and I just think that acknowledgement right now for the dyslexia community is really critical. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for submitting written testimony. It's very helpful. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Israel-Davis. The last name is I-S-R-A-E-L-Davis. Good evening, board members. I am a PPS teacher and parent. I am also a member of ODE's Oregon Dyslexia Advisory Council, or ODAC. That's an advisory body that was assembled by ODE's state dyslexia specialist, Carrie Thomas Beck, to help develop policy around the implementation of the requirements of SB 612. It's my involvement in this advisory council that initially led me to inquire about our district's plan to implement the requirements of SB 612. In March of 2016, I began to communicate with staff in the Office of Teaching and Learning about who was in charge of implementation and if there was a timeline already developed. In March of 2017, I had my first meeting with Office of Teaching and Learning staff to discuss the timeline. I have attached the timeline of all my communications with OTL staff. My main concern was initially the implementation of the teacher training requirement. The requirement is that at least one teacher in every K-5 and K-8 school must receive training from the ODE's list of approved dyslexia-related training opportunities. Fortunately, the deadline for teachers to have received this training has been extended from January 1st, 2018, to July 1st, 2018. Part of the reason for this extension is that it took longer than expected to vet the trainings which were submitted. This meant that the first list of approved trainings wasn't published until late May, early June of 2017, and the most up-to-date list was published last week, and I attached it, provided it for you. But the main reason I've come to speak to you today is because I think this is a moment for us to show that when we come together, we can do amazing things. Our district could lead the state not just in a smooth implementation of the bare bones requirements of SB 612, but in truly providing excellence both in identifying and appropriately serving students with dyslexia. I'm asking that PPS establish a public process to build policy and procedures for students with dyslexia and their families. I'm asking that students, families, and teachers be given a say in this process, and I'm asking that the board be involved in overseeing this process. And I'm asking this on behalf of K, a student going into the eighth grade, who is reading at a second-grade level at the end of last year. I'm asking on behalf of E and W, who will be going into third grade this year, sorry, and almost have all their letter sounds, because they are rock stars and they worked so hard last year. And I'm asking on behalf of all the students whose families cannot pay the $1,000 private assessment fee and $100 to $200 per week for private tutoring. We owe them a free and appropriate education which is not dependent on zip code. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you both for your testimony. I'm going to ask Roseanne to make sure that Director Sparza Brown, who is the Chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee, receives the testimony and that we follow up through the committee process. But thank you both for coming and for your advocacy for kids.
Thank you. And I'd also like to ask the chairs to consider putting on our next agenda a resolution to declare October Dyslexia Awareness Month for PPS.
We can do that.
Our last speaker is Stephen Goldberg.
My name is Stephen Goldberg, G-O-L-D-B-E-R-G. Both of my children attended Irvington School in the 1980s. It was a wonderful experience. A critical part of that experience was the school's racial diversity, which at that time was close to 50 percent. That has changed at Irvington and in Portland as our city has become less and less racially and economically diverse. The causes for this are generally beyond your powers as school board members to deal with. I know you are concerned with our racial diversity in Portland schools and in its workforce, and that you've evidenced that in terms of the hire of our new superintendent. So it was alarming to me to read about the verdict against the district last May, finding that Portland Public Schools allowed a racially hostile work environment. What I hoped was that your response would be to accept that verdict, to learn from it, and to focus on changing the conditions which allowed the repeated racial insults and taunts suffered by the two maintenance department employees to continue for several years. Instead, you have chosen to fight this judgment. Even if there was a good legal basis for the appeal, which I doubt, given the integrity and experience of the trial judge, you appear to be ignoring and undermining any lessons to be learned from that judgment. I urge you to drop the appeal of this verdict and to clearly and unequivocally signal to the community that supports you, particularly people of color, and to those who work for the school district, that racially discriminatory conduct within the district will no longer be tolerated. In these political times, in this time of Charlottesville, it is that kind of clarity which is so desperately called for. Again, I urge you to drop the appeal of that verdict. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so the next report is the superintendent recruitment. So I think that picture says it all, and we can turn up the lights back after. Forty-two days, that's the number of days since this new board was installed to the time we announced our new superintendent last Friday. The board was very pleased to announce that we hired Guadalupe Guerrero to serve as our next superintendent. Guadalupe comes to us from San Francisco, where he most recently served as a deputy superintendent. I want to thank the board for all the work they did. That was 42 days, and a little bit before, of hard work and really intense work of every member of this board. I also want to thank the community for the work they performed as part of the superintendent recruitment. Going back over a year ago with the prior board, several hundred community members participated in that process, sharing their priorities for a new leader in a half a dozen public meetings, including a target meetings with historically underserved populations in our community. In addition, hundreds more offered their thoughts through an online survey. We believe that Guadalupe is the right leader at the right time for our city and our schools and our kids, and we're looking forward to his arrival. As you can see from the photo, he's signed a contract, and he was notified by TSPC that his reciprocal administrator license has been issued, so great. Great, no, yes. How about that for quick action by TSPC? So we're fortunate to have someone of his talent and conviction leading PPS, and in the weeks ahead, we're, want to ask the community to join us in welcoming him to our, both our school community and the broader community. So hopefully, this will be the last superintendent recruitment report for quite a while. Okay, so any other board members want to make any sort of comments before we move on to the next item?
You missed two of them.
Yeah.
I missed two guys here.
The next item on our agenda is, the previous board had a first reading of the revised anti-harassment policy in April of 2017. Since the first reading occurred before many of us were serving in the board, we'd like to consider stepping back and receiving an update from the senior legal counsel, Stephanie Harper.
Good evening, directors. I'm Stephanie Harper, senior legal counsel.
I'm not sure your mic's on.
Oh, it's not on.
Okay. I think the other mic's working.
Good evening. There we go. Thank you for the time this evening on the agenda. So I'm here to provide an update to the board, and I think we have some, do you have that PowerPoint?
Yes, they have it loaded.
Okay. Just, I'm providing an update to the board. So one of our prior staff attorneys had come to the board previously, and we were in the process of updating both the board policies around Title IX, and specifically, the prior discussion really was more focused around sexual harassment, sexual violence, and those pieces of Title IX which prevents discrimination based on sex in our educational entities. And our existing, your existing board policy covers and protects both staff and students from sex harassment and sex discrimination in our environment, school district environment. One, the first recommendation was actually to pull apart the existing board policy and separate it into two pieces, so that we have one piece that focuses on students and another board policy that focuses on staff, just because sometimes things get a little enmeshed. And we wanted to really, and the board really, prior board wanted to focus on the protection of students in the educational environment. Since that time, we've done some more work internally on the process, and what I'm recommending is actually is that we go back to whatever the appropriate board committee is so that we can discuss some of the policy choices that need to be made, not as part of the board policy necessarily, but there was interest expressed by the board at the time to actually have a really good vibrant discussion around the administrative directive that has to do with how do we actually prevent and stop harassment from occurring in our school environments and sexual violence, and how do we cover all the topics that are related to Title IX, which also include providing opportunities to all students and not making distinctions based on gender. So for example, within the science, technology, engineering, and those kinds of fields, STEM or STEAM programs, making sure opportunities are equally available to students of all genders, and as well as how do we do, and how do we protect our students who are transgender or gender nonconforming? We've actually done some work through a policy group around developing an administrative directive that focuses solely on how to provide support to our students who are transgendered and/or gender nonconforming, and we have, you know, a policy that's actually prepared and ready to roll out that relates just to protecting our students. So we've been sort of combining a number of pieces and want to come back to the board and go through the subcommittee and have a little bit more discussion around those pieces, as well as we have actually established and are in the process of posting for a position for a Title IX coordinator. That position has not yet been posted or hired yet, as we've been focusing on other positions. We just got budget authority for that position effective July 1st. And there are some pieces of the administrative directive and the administrative investigative protocols that really should involve the Title IX coordinator and the new person who was hired in helping frame and decide how those investigative processes work. I will note that the board policy that was, that came out previously after the first reading, there were no formal comments that came in to the board. We did have some discussion and comments from prior board members. We had some additional review by our legal counsel's office, outside legal counsel, and I've done some additional research and then worked with folks internally. I wanted to let you know we have established and identified the new director for high school programs as being our Title IX coordinator until we do have somebody actually hired in that position. We're in the process of setting up for the new school year, a Title IX PPS email address so that we are clear and clearly communicating through our handbooks to both our staff and our students that there's a place, and you know, and this is the place to go, to raise concerns in addition to administrators within your school sites. So we are taking those steps to make sure that that information, there's a Title IX coordinator, you can go to OCR, that those pieces of information are widely disseminated. So around the student policy, really the four parts that we have been working on enhancing have to do with prevention, recognizing discrimination and/or retaliation, and then the investigation process findings tracking, and then how do we respond when something surfaces. So in terms of the prevention component, where to go for help? So I mentioned the Title IX coordinator. We've designated on an interim basis the high school program director. PPS Student Services, you have some new team members down there in Student Services, and we actually have a meeting scheduled this Friday to have a, we need a sort of multidisciplinary team approach to these kinds of situations when they do arise. And we're actually working on establishing a contract with a provider, a $0 contract with a provider that's grant-funded, having to do with how to provide support to victims of sexual violence and sexual assault so that they get the support that they, that they need in those situations. So, and then another key component of prevention is, of course, education to the community, our families, staff, and students. As I mentioned, you know, and I think you probably have heard a little bit around the school climate work that's being conducted, and also the PPS supports for transgender and gender nonconforming students. We do have a draft administrative directive that we, you know, certainly can, would like to talk through with, with the, whatever, the subcommittee, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm not up to date on all of the subcommittees that you have for the board. And in addition, there's a state law, ORS 36.059, that requires school districts to provide child sexual abuse prevention instructional programs for students that are age-appropriate for K to 12, and we're working on just trying to pull all these various pieces of information together. The second part, recognizing discrimination and/or retaliation, and I separated these out because it's really important as just part of the educational process. There doesn't need to be a finding of sexual harassment or sexual violence in order for retaliation to have occurred, and it's really critical in what we know from, so what I know, at least from my experience in training in workplace harassment, sex harassment cases that are employment-related, people don't come forward with concerns or complaints because they don't really want to be subjected to retaliation. They don't want to have their business be made public. They don't want to be drawn into huge, some huge situation, and so it's really important that we assure people that in order for them to, that, we don't want to have a chilling effect on students who come forward with complaints or concerns, and that they have the opportunity to participate in a process and be free from retaliation in their educational environment. And then, as mentioned before, I do think we need to expand your policy a little bit to cover not just the sexual harassment, sexual violence, sexual assault, but also to cover opportunities in education as well as athletics. And these are not things that we, you know, we, from, from the work that I've been able to do so far and checking with people, everything is happening as it should be happening, I guess, in terms of making sure that those opportunities are equal, but I do think your policy should be expanded to cover all those pieces of Title IX, not just the harassment, sexual violence. Okay, then, or any questions on sort of that policy piece and policy recommendation? Director Anthony?
Yes, thank you very much. Particularly regarding this, what kind of timeline would you be expecting?
So on the policy part of things?
Yes, how long before we could have something in place?
So.
That might depend on our, our action, perhaps?
And, and, yes, and, and my, one question is, you know, what is, to what extent do you really want, do you want a full administrative directive to be ready for you at the same time you're adopting the policy, or would you rather have, you know, the policy pieces adopt, and go through and adopt those pieces with the administrative directive, you know, understanding that there needs to be some additional work done in that regard, I guess is the question? That's part of what I've been struggling with on the timeline.
Thank you.
So, yes, but.
If I may, she's alluded twice to the Title IX position. That's on my desk, and I, that's on my desk, and I'm drafting that. We focused on hiring two attorneys and a paralegal first, and I hope to have this done in the next week as far as job description.
Great. So one thing just on the policy, since we were originally scheduled to have this be a second reading, just in terms of the timing, Director Anthony, I think what I'm going to do, unless Director Constan ejects, is sending the policy to your Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee for further policy work, and assuming we can have a couple meetings and get it moved along, I don't see that, it sounds like there's a lot of work done so far, so that we should be able to move it out, and then the AD will follow, the administrative directive will follow that?
Yes.
Sure.
You'll accept?
I accept that gladly. And I had a question, so in going through here and all these pieces that will feed into the administrative directive, and you really acknowledged how important it is to put the meat on the bone, so to speak, with that administrative directive, because one of the issues that has arisen is that our school-based staff just didn't have the tools and didn't have a uniform set of guidelines that would help them respond responsibly and as comprehensively as they could in terms of, especially in terms of protecting students who've come forward with concerns. So is there anything, in the absence of having finished the administrative directive and adopted this revision to policy, is there any training that is going on or that we're able to do to provide a little more guidance to our principals this year, given that we've done all this work thus far?
Yeah, yes, it's just a matter of, yes, I'm happy to do that and put that together, and I already feel like we have all the components. It's just a matter of figuring out the right timing for that, given that, but, so our main concern was to get out to our students, the Title IX information, who to contact when you have concerns, and have our. It's just a matter of figuring out the right timing for that, given that, but, so our main concern was to get out to our students, the Title IX information, who to contact when you have concerns, and have our interim Title IX Coordinator get the information she needs so that she can be prepared to track as soon as school gets started with any complaints that come into her and handle any investigation processes. So that's where I was going to focus first. And then, and we've had those conversations, like I say, this week. So I'll focus towards the end of this, you know, by the end of this week around the other pieces of what should we be getting out to our administrators and teachers?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So, so, and this actually leads into then the investigation process findings and tracking. So there will be some feedback to the Board Committee, Director Constan then, for your discussion there around, so for example, one of the questions raised and has come up is if, what if a complaint, well, let me back up. So for example, DHS, when they get reports of child abuse there, they have three different categories, founded, unfounded, or unable to determine. So they have a tracking system and a categorization kind of system in place. And part of what we need to actually decide is how do we want to set up this tracking system that the Title IX Coordinator is going to have? And so, because there are times when complaints are not substantiated or sexual conduct is not found, and then the question becomes though, and this is something that the prior senior legal counsel had talked about with the board, was how do we identify patterns over the course of time, should there be some? So that needs to be worked into the process along with the administrative directive. I also think what would needs to happen within the administrative directive is the board or the administrative directive and the committee needs to talk about what standard is going to apply. There are, there's a state law in place that defines what is sexual conduct. TSPC has a definition for what is sexual harassment and what is sexual conduct. But what we also have and what you had looked at for your first reading on the board policy was using the term grooming or professional boundaries. And I've done some more research, collected some materials through some national resources that really talk about and help define, and this is the part, Director Constan, that I think would be part of the education and helping our administrators being able to recognize what are some of the things, you know, I have a number of items. But the categories are, you know, where there's undue interest in a particular student, poor judgment in relation to a student, or becoming involved in the student's private life. And there's a number of factors that are looked at and can be considered. But we need to define that for our staff so that they know, they know what they are looking at when they, you know, to recognize those kinds of things that may be red flags and we need to check into further, that may not necessarily be or rise to the level of being sexual conduct under the state law, so. And then of course, the other challenge as a government entity, school district, and employer is to meet the obligations that respect the rights of all of the impacted persons in these kinds of situations.
So before you go to the next page, Director Bailey, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Not a question, but just to make a note that a few months ago, there was a discussion at Grant High School around rape culture. And one teacher sort of saying, this doesn't exist, and female students, current and former, coming out of the woodwork, pointing out what was going on in the halls of Grant High School and after hours dating situations and so on. That's a really pervasive culture, and it's not just Grant, of course.
Yes.
So I, I just want to kind of plant a marker there in terms of our part in our schools of working to challenge that culture. And again, that's, that's the, this is all part of that, but that cultural piece, that school climate piece is, to me, the key-
Yes.
The key piece that we can take on.
Right, because that's, that's students' real lives, what they are faced with every day, yes.
And I want to point out too that we have already had good student input on the drafting of this policy.
Yes. And I do think I'd like to, with a new student representative on the board, Moses, I was hoping that we could expand our circle of team members, either you or others who you recommend be, be part of that discussion as we drill down even further to make this a very vibrant policy and process. Okay, then the next big component then of these policies is really how do we respond when something comes to our attention? And I sort of broke these out into, and this has more to do with again, how we're gonna, how I'm sort of outlining what kind of training and discussion we're going to have with administrators. What are the interim measures that need to be taken when something first comes up? Because, you know, you get the initial report and you need to take some steps immediately, but you aren't making your final decision, of course. How effective are those measures? And we have to decide the record-keeping form and look at the retention schedules for that. Final measures, they're going to be case-specific, of course. We always want to keep open lines of communications, both with the complainant and respondent. And final measures I added into there besides case-specific, systemic, right? So there's going to be, it needs to be a feedback loop that's built into this about what are the pieces that need to happen systemically so that we can learn from each, each instance that occurs and work, you know, come up with better practices and to prevent it from happening again. And then the effectiveness of those final measures, meaning there's always needs to be follow-up with people. How is it going? You know, we've done this, we've, we're providing you, you know, we've moved this person, or whatever those measures are that we've taken, you always want to be following up with the impacted people to find out, you know, are you getting still what you need? Are you getting what you need educationally speaking? Are you feeling comfortable in your environment? We want to be doing that kind of follow-up and monitoring. And then defining the record-keeping, what the form looks like and what the retention schedule needs to be around that. So next steps, as I, I guess I should have started with the slide. So the first thing to focus on for me is where to go for help with resources into our student and staff handbooks. Those are in the process of being finalized this week. We've, I've taken steps to identify our PPS cross-departmental work team, get our stakeholder input. You'll be hearing more about the complaint process, Lighthouse, Safe Oregon, Tipline. We have a number of new school safety measures that are going to be, or mechanisms that are going to be implemented this upcoming school year. And we want to make sure we're incorporating those contact information and phone numbers in with, with this as well. Our interim Title IX Coordinator, the Director of High School Programs, will, you know, we'll have her set up and ready to go for the first couple of months until we have a Title IX Coordinator hired, of course, include her feedback. And then we'll come back with a revised first reading, draft administrative directive, and of course, the hiring of the coordinator. Any other questions or input that you'd like me to take into account and take back to our work team?
So just to clarify, we're still, we are still moving forward with the policy that was presented for the first reading. This is just an update for all of us, and then we'll work on the administrative directive and have the second reading on the policy as written?
Correct. This, what technically this is supposed to be was the second reading, but we felt sense, we had a reconstituted board that would make sense to have another first reading, and it's great that we have got, it's not another first reading, but that we didn't move yet to the second reading until we have a briefing of the board. It'll also have, provide an opportunity to incorporate some new items. So looking forward to you bringing it back expeditiously.
Yep, I will move that expeditiously. My brain's in it now, so I'd like to move it.
And then just on the student input side, the previous one at Lima was still student representative. We determined that this would be one of the areas that we want to prioritize that Super Sac would deal with, so we are working on coming together with the committee to finalize our key points that we want in this particular area.
Okay, so we can connect offline about when and how we get together on that?
How we want to communicate.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So thanks all, for all of your work on that. We're looking forward to getting it implemented and out in schools. I think that'll be great for our students. For this next item, I'm going to ask Dr. Laura Parker, Chief Strategic Officer, to provide an update on the middle school plan. And I thought it might be worthwhile, before we begin the discussion, to just sort of outline a little bit about the direction that's needed from the board. So, and correct me if, Dr. Parker, if I'm interacurate or you want to share a nuance that I might have missed. So there's a budget amendment, so most immediately there's a 10.5 million request that needs to be an amendment to the FY 2018 budget by the 29th. There needs to be an affirmation of the scope of this project plan. There also, and I can talk more about that, but we want to make sure that we've got the right scope. And then committees, as you'll see from the presentation, there are essentially two primary committees that this will need, that will need to do work on this or review this. The Teaching and Learning Committee plans for Focus Option Programming with these two catchments, both current programming and anticipated. And these plans should include at a minimum current and future planning for DLI and Access Academy. This may call attention to a need for Teaching and Learning to make recommendations at a later date around tag and DLI program plans in the years to come at a systems level. And then after the middle school framework committees complete the design work, which is slated for the completion at the end of December, or in December of 2017, Teaching and Learning Committee will probably want to take a detailed, a more detailed briefing on the final design of the middle school framework in a later date, how that relates to the future middle school openings such as the new Kellogg facilities. So that's the Teaching and Learning Committee. Then Enrollment and Forecasting, so Teaching and Learning is Director Sparza-Browns, and then the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee, which is Director Bailey. You should be prepared to recommend an implementation plan for the feeder patterns, inclusive of boundary change recommendations. And in addition, working with staff on critical decisions that were outlined in the presentation. One, confirming the feeder pattern proposal, and two, recommending the enrollment balancing plan for implementation of feeder patterns to Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights. So it's a big body of work, and I'm sure we're going to see from the presentation, it's complex and has many interrelated impacts on other schools and even outside of, so if your child is in a school other than the proposed Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights, you shouldn't ignore this discussion because there will be very broad impacts potentially across our, across our school system. So with that, Dr. Parker, please proceed.
Thank you, and thank you for your time this evening. The primary goal of tonight's presentation is really to build some shared understanding about the major work streams that exist with not only the opening of two new middle schools, but the conversion of a series of K8 schools into K5s, and the continuity of services and programming within all of those affected schools, and really the broader area in our system. The second critical piece for this evening is to get a sense of what those key timelines and decisions are, to again, understand how this work flows. We're really excited about this opportunity to open these two schools and about the opportunity to implement for the first time a new middle school framework that's been designed with the leadership inside PPS. And you might say, well, we already have middle schools. Well, we do have middle schools, and very successful middle schools, but we didn't have a guiding framework for middle school design that really captures visionary experience for those middle years. And the reason why that was important to develop was not only should we be setting some expectations of learning experiences for all of our students in the middle years, but what those student supports are, how we invest resources strategically so that there's consistency, scalability, sustainability, and how we not only call attention to, but take action in eradicating inequities that are known in our district. So establishing that middle school framework with research-based guiding principles was critical in building the foundation for success instructionally and with the student experience in our schools. That work will be implemented for the first time within these two schools. We're going to be going through an overview of a master project plan that actually references 472 different line items inside our master plan, and of course, all of those projects have a series of tasks underneath each of them. The original plan was developed last year by the Middle School Implementation Team, again, that leadership team that was largely in the direct, direction of former Assistant Superintendent Chris Russo in the Office of Teaching and Learning, that again, laid the groundwork for what a visionary middle years program would be. Over the summer, revisions to that plan were made, and a new project team was established. And so that new project team includes Brenda Fox as the original planning principal and architect of much of this visionary programming, Rudy Rudolph as our lead project manager, and myself as the executive sponsor. The three of us are working to coordinate all of those departments. However, within each department, there are significant investments in regular attention to implementation of this plan and following the respective tasks and major work streams within each department. So this is a large coordinated effort that touches nearly every department in PPS. The implementation project plan identifies those work streams, deliverables, key decision points associated. I will be talking towards the end of the presentation about key milestones so that you can just get yourselves oriented around what happens when we go from planning to design to procurement to really operationalizing all the pieces and infrastructure moves. And there is a complete budget request of just over 10 and a half million dollars that again, I would expect to come back to the board with more details. There are a couple of critical decisions that we wanted to make sure we called out this evening so that we could identify the appropriate workflow to get to these critical decisions and make sure that we stay on target. First, board approval of naming the actual middle school feeder schools that would flow into Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights. Second, board approval of the feeder pattern implementation plan. So those two critical decisions are, are connected, but making sure that we are clear about which schools feed into these two middle schools and what the implementation plan would be in converting K8s to K5s and which cohorts start to move in what years. We're calling for a decision on both of those by October 3rd. And the identification of financial resources needed to execute. Yes, the preference is August 20, 29th to be able to identify those allocated resources through a budget amendment as we understand that process. But if it needs to go to more critical detail through the appropriate committee structure, then we could take until September 12th to get to that place so that there's clarity in that. There is broad recognition that the feeder pattern and implementation plan really needs to be determined by October 2017 in order to successfully open these schools by the 2018, 2019 school year. And again, as we go through the work streams and the key milestones, I hope to build an understanding of why that is. As we've worked with coordinating all of the operational departments that will be pulling this task off, it's broadly recognized that October 17th is the latest possible date for board approval of the feeder patterns in order to pull this off. I believe that we can do this. We are focused. We are energized. We are coordinated and connected. We are working every single week through not only our project teams at a system level, but inside each of the departments, and regular updates to interim Superintendent Awad on a weekly basis. And I believe that we can do this, and we're excited about this opportunity. I do want to lay out some understanding of the compressed work that's taking place in order to meet these targets, and some of the risks that we do, we do have some concerns about and just want to again, build awareness of. So overall, if we try to change the project's scope, we'll have very difficult times identifying financial or operational capacity to institute additional work streams or decision points. So involving more schools, broadening the scope, adding a piece to it, can delay all of the decisions and workflow that flow from one another. Within some of the specific areas, again, wanted to build your awareness here. Facilities has already been engaged in a number of scoping exercises and planning activities and design activities with the two schools as well as the, the two schools of Roseway Heights and Harriet Tubman and preparing them to be middle schools. But without that final approval of budget allocated resources and the different programs that would, and schools that would flow into those schools, they're not able to really plan and execute on any of those designs. So they're very, very, very anxious to know what the final decision is so that they can start executing on some of those needed facilities upgrades to make the middle schools achieve the ed specs designed in our new middle school framework and vision. Within budget and staffing, so our technical infrastructure around budget and staffing is already pretty lean, and we have to convert all of our systems and the staff, the school codes, the budget codes that line up with current entities to the new entities, and again, carry out- carry out a series of complex technical configurations as we reconstitute the entities and implement new school codes. And so all of that is already a bit compressed. Teaching and learning, so much of the Office of Teaching and Learning's work is dependent on the selection of feeder patterns because what will happen this fall is Teaching and Learning will lead the work of completing the framework design with specifications to each of the schools. There's a lot of intense committee work that broadens participation amongst our educators that will take place all the way through December of 2017. And each school involved would have representation on those various committees so as to localize the framework to the specific school. And yet, we're looking for again, those assignments and that verification of which schools. And then of course, community engagement. There's a series of activities and tools and community engagement processes that SIPA has laid out that would not only prepare, but celebrate with our school communities these changes and make that preparation for our parents and students again, localized and owned. And they want to start executing on that, but are looking for that feeder pattern and the feeder pattern plan to be approved. So those are some of the compressed work streams that again, we believe we can execute on, but wanted to make sure that we highlighted the need to arrive at a decision of feeder patterns by October.
So just a commentary before we get to the key work streams. Want to look at how compressed that work is. I would hope that tomorrow, the board chairs of the committees are working with staff going to have meetings scheduled. I find it, I'm a little bit troubled that there's already a warning about delay in feeder school decisions when we don't even have anything in front of us yet to make decisions on. So just the, for the board to be able to do its work, I would suggest we try and get dates scheduled now so that we don't, you know, so we try and still hit those dates, but that's really aggressive.
So Laura and I have a meeting set up for tomorrow afternoon.
Great.
And I haven't seen anything. And you have decided not to share anything with the board at this point. So in terms of our reaction to it, we're waiting. And I do want to point out that portions of the plan have already been leaked publicly, so.
Well, we're looking forward to working through the appropriate, you know, board committees and getting into the details to again, build collective ownership and understanding of, you know, the right decisions. And yes, moving rapidly, moving rapidly, but I believe that we can do this because we are really focused.
Go ahead, Director Constance.
So one thing that's not explicitly called out there is making sure that there's coordination with the Office of School Modernization on the development of the ed specs for Kellogg because that work is going on at the same time.
I'm glad you called that out. So another key, key goal of the implementation of this plan is to loop back to our system-wide designs for facility ed specs for middle schools. And again, those were all, you know, defined through this visionary work of identifying a middle school framework and how that influences the ed specs. And actually, when we get into some of the budget numbers, you'll see how Facilities would like to be investing dollars around the area of science labs, for example, that meet those ed specs that have been designed and are connected to the Kellogg planning. So that's one area.
But because it's a chicken and egg thing there because those are just in development, so they need the, you know, wisdom that's coming out of that programmatic vision with the same urgency that...
Yep, you are correct.
One more question. You said that these two middle schools would be the first ones with the implementation of the middle school framework. What about Oakley-Green?
Oakley-Green was opened before the middle school framework was finished.
Understood. There's still in motion in a sense.
Sure, and per the board chair's comment about what Teaching and Learning might expect, I would anticipate that through the Teaching and Learning Committee's structure, there would be an understanding of what the framework is once the design is finished in December and then later, how that would influence future middle school design such as Kellogg or those that already exist such as Oakley. So I would expect that to come through Teaching and Learning, if I'm understanding that correctly.
When does the design get applied to existing middle schools? Was my question and I'm not sure that, you said it would be for future middle schools, but...
I believe that understanding what that plan is for applying to future and existing middle schools would happen inside the Teaching and Learning Committee's structure and leadership here. Yeah, I think that's a good expectation.
Did you have some? Well, and the other piece of that, Scott, is that it's not just middle schools, but middle grades. We want to make sure that we're taking a lot of the learning and the recommendations from this middle school plan and implementing as much as we can in our K-8s that will be around for a while. And some of those things are, some of those recommendations are cost neutral in terms of programmatic recommendations, so the sooner we can get those things that we know are best practices out to our kids, the better.
Director Moore?
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm going to be a little impatient here. You've been very clear with us about the deadlines that for us, for our work to be I would like to know when we can expect to see something that we can work with.
I would love an opportunity to present that right now. So the first key work stream is around the feeder pattern planning. And so the big areas are planning feeders, boundary changes, program placement for the Tubman catchment. So that includes finalizing the feeder schools, developing enrollment transfer implementation plans, engagement of administrators and key community stakeholders, followed by Roseway Heights and the work around feeders, boundaries, program placement and implementation plan, engagement with administrators, development of what that plan looks like. Earlier this year, former interim Superintendent McKean called for a group of PPS administrators to work through the summer in developing additional iterations of this plan. We received valuable feedback from community stakeholders, including the DEBRAC committee on the iteration of this plan. We're currently finalizing all those details and I would expect something with enrollment and transfer certainly by the 1st of September, per Director Bailey and I's ability to formulate those agendas and schedule all those right pieces. And it's always a little bit daunting to try to schedule something right at the beginning of the school year, but that's where we stand.
Are you expecting...
Early September.
Are you expecting the boundaries of the surrounding area of the cluster schools to remain the same?
I expect that we have put together, and I expect again, that we'd be working with the appropriate Enrollment Forecasting Committee to finalize an enrollment balancing plan that would require boundary changes. Enrollment balancing that would seek to achieve enrollment parity among our K-5s that are part of this plan, which was something that was in valuable feedback again, brought forth by multiple stakeholders.
So that's within the clusters. So let's, you know, pick Roseway Heights and whatever schools.
Yes, I do, I do believe that there are potential boundary changes in the neighboring schools neighboring to those catchment areas.
So will there be outside of the catchment areas?
Yes, in order to achieve enrollment parity.
So we're going to see a whole lot of boundary changes rippling across...
And again, would like to work with the appropriate enrollment committee on those final details and what your guidance and recommendation.
So I'm just confused. Did you say that it wasn't going to be till September 1st that we would get it? Is that the day? Because just based on my experience, having been on the board when we consolidated, closed, and made lots of different changes in school configurations, is a month is not enough time to have sort of worked through with the community on, you know, some pretty significant changes. I mean, I just, we'd only be able to have, we'd have two, from September 1st, you know, at the most, two board meetings and, I mean, unless the committee's going to be meeting every day and the community, I mean, I would move it up as much as possible to even try and hit this date, but September 1st is going to be too late. I mean, in order to actually have any sort of authentic conversation with communities.
And I'd like to ask another question. I have not seen anywhere in this PowerPoint a mention of DEBRAC. So what's the plan for DEBRAC? Does it exist? Does it not exist? Is it going to be involved in this? Is it not going to be involved in this? What's the plan?
So within the feeder pattern planning, again, one of the big work streams is engagement with community stakeholders. What was last communicated with the DEBRAC committee, which is a superintendent committee, the last communication from, in setting expectations for work from former interim Superintendent McKean, was that they would be receiving an opportunity in September to review and provide the valuable critical feedback that that committee does so well of the latest iteration of the plan as developed by PPS administrators through the summer. So we're still on target to deliver in September that information and would absolutely welcome and invite feedback.
So I want to get into something we talked about earlier today, which is DEBRAC had a charge of taking on the whole East Side. Is it your understanding that that charge has been rescinded or does that still exist as part of their charge?
Again, I believe that that is a superintendent committee. When I joined the district in March, I was not aware of that charge from the former interim superintendent. So I think that's a good question for the appropriate person.
Yeah, for Director Bailey, given that interim Superintendent Awad is not here, I think it's an excellent question. I think we should ask him what he, since I know he's been involved in the discussions, we should ask.
So I just think it's important to point out that there's been a group of people that has spent a lot of time and are dangling there, out there, not knowing, they have, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there has been no official communication with the committee about where, what its status is for months. Jason is nodding his head. And that's not very respectful. And I'm not, just, I'll leave it there and we'll go on.
So I'm going to ask Roseanne Powell to make a note that Director Bailey would like an answer from the interim superintendent whether that charge has been rescinded or modified.
You can add me to that request, too.
So noted.
Thank you. Additional scopes within development of a feeder pattern plan and implementation plan also include the opening of Rose City Park as a neighborhood school and again, what that means in terms of boundary and enrollment changes, the potential relocation of the access program to Humboldt. And again, these are all things that we've just been preparing for and doing all the analysis that we can. And the next phase planning of what some future phase work might be, recognizing that these are two middle schools. We know certainly that we have Kellogg down the road that would be coming and we want to make sure that we start to articulate how we get to the plan for feeder pattern proposals there. So that wraps up the feeder pattern planning. The facilities and IT infrastructure upgrades, there are significant upgrades that facilities would like to execute on with the Tubman facility, Roseway Heights facility, some minor upgrades with Rose City Park and Humboldt as well. I'd like to call out that with facilities and IT infrastructure upgrades at the middle school level, a lot of this work is in response to defining what the ed specs are for a visionary middle years program, making sure that we have the classrooms outfitted in a way that supports the student experience, supports the, I gave an example earlier of science or STEAM learning, supports the work of project-based learning such as potential maker spaces experiences, supports all of the needs from a technology perspective. So looking at new instructional technology inside the classroom for both teachers and students that would support some additional instructional work that's happening around quality student feedback, student ownership of learning, development of student agency and engagement. So all of these infrastructure upgrades are really again, meant to fulfill the vision of a high-quality middle years program and student experiences. Around transportation and nutrition services, transportation needs to plan for new routes and all of the investments that are needed there, nutrition services, bringing online to additional schools and the impacts that might occur there with changes in demographics. Again, we're just preparing for all of those potentials so that it's captured. Finance and human resources, I already referenced this to some extent, there's a major investment that's needed around our data system updates so that once we identify what students are assigned in which school and what the enrollment is, not only for 1718 but down the road, excuse me, 1819, but down the road. We update all of our ERP systems. We identify a staffing timeline, so determine the allocation of that staffing. Again, that's another area of work that loops back to a district priority of moving up staff models and potential allocation.
ERP stands for...
Our ERP systems are basically our PeopleSoft system, so we use our, for finance and for human resources, what those major technical systems are for enterprise resource planning. We have to do school conversions from a budget perspective, so again, we have these entities and now we have new entities and moving all of those chart fields and budgets to the right places. So that's some of the major work around finance and human resources that has to take place. And again, knowing not only which students are assigned to which buildings, but which staff will be assigned to which buildings are important. Thank you. Around communications and community engagement, so this is another area that's exciting because this is an opportunity to really celebrate a visionary program for our communities. We want to make sure that we've determined the right messaging and the tools to communicate that messaging for the schools that are involved in this implementation. We want to make sure that we've engaged with our culturally specific partners. And again, all of this has been planning, a lot of this has happened, but once we have an official plan in place, we want to lead and work with our communities in that conversion and then preparing for the change and for the 1819 school year. Working through the development of the feeder pattern proposal for board adoption, so obviously there's a lot of content, as has already been raised, around the need to understand the middle school vision, content around our focus option programming and what to expect in terms of program articulation, development of the implementation plan so that it's not just a... program articulation, development of the implementation plan so that it's not just a simple task of identifying the numbers of students in each year in each school, but actually developing the narrative around this. So there's a large investment that, again, has already been planned for and is already in the works so that we can communicate what this feeder pattern proposal might be. Highlighting the work that has already been done in community engagement, as this isn't new. We've been working on this for a while and there is pretty well documented engagement activities in listening to our communities. So we want to make sure that we recognize that and continue it. Making sure that we engage with school site councils and staff and school communities around the feeder schools implementation plan adoption, making sure that we've supported messaging the school staff, and again, that they're all part of the process. So again, these are just major work streams and tasks to be completed. Teaching and learning is a huge body of work. This is really where it all started. So the teaching and learning work streams include completing the development of the framework through a series of middle school program committees, really putting kind of the meat on the bones, if you will, in terms of the course offerings, the scope and sequence, what middle school schedules might exist in the two new schools, determining the appropriate student supports, supporting site councils, so developing what, developing a plan for site councils and executing on that plan, identifying the key community partners within each school that would support and participate on the, on those site councils, determining the curriculum materials and the whole process of transferring those materials, procurement of them, determine staff roles. So after all this design work is done around localizing the framework to the two schools, what are the staff roles that are needed to implement the instructional plan within the two schools, determining program placement and articulation, and again, confirming the classroom set aside that is needed for specific programs, what the facilities and IT needs are for specific programs as well. Articulation for DLI and IB has already been well highlighted and making sure that we finish that planning as well. So those are some of the large scopes, scope of work for teaching and learning.
Question from Director Moore.
Yeah, I have a question about the teaching and learning items.
Try to get back there. There you go.
So we, we have established, you have said that we need to lock down feeder pattern decision by October 3rd in order to do staffing and all the rest of it. And my understanding is that we're looking at a very aggressive budget schedule this coming year. I have, I have heard a desire to have the budget adopted by December, which means that staffing is going to have to be done early. So can you supply, has anybody established deadlines for all this work in teaching and learning?
Yes. And I can invite, this is superintendent to speak to that, but specific to staffing. So a lot of the same analysts who support all this work are also working very diligently on a new staffing model to support that change in the budget process. So, you know, those work streams are synced up from an allocation. So the staff model allocation would be done earlier to support that earlier budget process. Then, once the committee work for teaching and learning is completed in terms of a design perspective, then we have a sense as to what unique staffing roles might be necessary for the two schools.
No, I get that idea. I mean, I get the sequencing of the work, but it's, what I'm trying to convey here is, it's, I'm feeling uncomfortable because I don't have a sense of timeline. The only thing I have a timeline on is when I have to vote. But I don't have a timeline on when I'm going to get some info that will allow me to vote. And not just on the feeder pattern, but on everything else as well. So, so I'm curious, I'm eager to hear. And before you start, let me just say, I'm also going to want to hear not only about the new middle schools that are opening, but I also want to know if, if you're factoring in the middle grades in the remaining K eights to ensure that those students are going to get something approaching a real middle school experience.
So, very quickly to your first question on timelines, the master project plan literally has four hundred and seventy-two projects and tasks in, within our project management software that we use. Every week when the project team meets, we identify where we are, what risks we have, and then we coordinate, you know, throughout the departments. And each department lead is also doing the same work of monitoring where we are in terms of timelines and making sure that those are updated.
And I appreciate all that, and I know it's a nightmare and better you than me, that's all I have to say. But some ballpark dates would be helpful.
Yes. As an officer of teaching and learning.
Do you want to identify yourself, please?
Yes. My name is Dr. Trong, and I'm the interim assistant superintendent for teaching, Officer Teaching and Learning. So since I started in beginning of July, I have worked closely with the team to identify timelines, and we actually can submit this to you tomorrow or tonight. And it has timeline for each month, what are the planning principles supposed to do to get to December. And then all the site council meetings, I can just also give this to you right now. Then we also also have another master timeline that's actually aligned with the work with IT and everybody else, and actually the cost, the cost aligned to the work. So we do have a timeline because we've been working closely with Ms. Brenda Profox, who is actually leading this work, and she's been doing the work from last year. So I can actually give this to you so you can have a view of what we have.
And all the departments have that. And the next section, I'm going to talk about milestones. But if you want more specific timelines on any of these pieces, we can certainly provide that.
And what we really, what we really want to consider is all the electives and all the key success program models that are out there to really give our students successful education in middle grade level. But since we're opening these two schools, this would be our first, I don't want to say pilot, because it is real schools, it's not a pilot, but actually a process for us to making sure that we open the school day one to be successful with the implementation of the framework, social framework. So that's why we really keynote is to be successful to support our students the first day of school. So let me give this to Karen, or would you like to see it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so just again, to highlight a couple of key milestones, and if there's more detail around the timelines that you're interested in for any of these, please just let me know and we can provide that. So, in the fall, so first of all, we want to make sure that we've hired the planning principals, which we have executed on. And I believe a formal announcement, you know, will be made within the context of the events surrounding administrators coming back to school. So we have our planning principals onboard, which is really critical to beginning all of that site council and engagement work as well as finishing the framework plan. In September and October, we're focused, as you know, on development and adoption of the middle school feeder proposal implementation plan, and all energies are focused there. Once that's formalized in October, we would create the site councils. We would then determine and allocate staffing, again, per the major work stream of staffing that is also occurring. In November, we would finalize all the details around the relocation of programs and services. Most of this, we already know, most of this we've already planned, most of this we've started to communicate, but just putting the final dotted i's and crossed t's, so to speak, on that. In winter, in December, the middle school framework committees would complete their design work. Again, this is key to completing that phase of having staff and community involvement in localizing the framework design and triggering the needed staff roles and job descriptions that we would then start executing on when staff recruitment began in January. Enrollment projections as well from the finalization of the implementation plan, that starts to trigger operational work like transportation, route planning, and nutrition services. In February, the facility design work, so Director Constem, to your earlier point, and going back to the ed spec work that is happening, this lines up with these two middle schools in February vis a vis classroom design and ed specs for middle schools, as well as the student technology plans that we're excited about developing and designing vis a vis the instructional guidance. And towards the end of that month, facilities and IT figures out all the different moving plans that have to occur, and we get the project management teams specked and ready for that. In the spring, we finalize school schedules in terms of the course offerings. In March, we complete the procurement activities for curriculum materials. This is when stuff starts to show up. So we have all of this design work, community and staff engagement work, and planning work, and then we start to execute on the operational pieces. We get all the IT items procured, we finish the phase one of the facility upgrades, and we complete the site council work vis a vis the leadership of the planning principals.
Can I just ask, what exactly is this site council work going to consist of? I mean, I, I've been on site councils. You know, it's a variable experience. I mean, it would be.
Sometimes it's no experience at all.
Yeah. And, and, oh, by the way, many of our schools, many of our existing schools don't have site councils, by the way. So, I mean, what are you envisioning in terms of a site council work, especially before these schools even open?
So the site councils are established for the two new middle schools and include representation from the community and staff to help determine some of the localization of student supports that would be unique to that school programming.
And then we would be bringing a lot of student data, like who's coming into the school, the feeder patterns, and the data that actually site council would be able to support us in determining the process. You know, like how do you do different activities? And for me, as, when I was a principal, site council is really about data-driven and making decision, community and partner and teachers have the whole pictures of what it looks like it's going to be in school, and then be able to give input, feedback. And so that's kind of what we perceive site council to be, because there's going to be a lot of pieces moving forward, even including building relationship, making sure that our teachers are onboard, and our parents understand what are going to be happening in the school year. And they would have some input in, in decision-making along the process. That's what we are seeking for, for site council members. And we'd be forming site councils for these schools in the process, if they don't have one.
Just to clarify, I'm a big fan of site councils, so this is a good thing. I'm just curious.
Yeah. And I think, no, no, that's a good question, because I think site councils are not consistent across, they're kind of like different at all schools. So maybe when we, when we establish a site council, we're going to have guidance on really specifically what are we looking for and what are next steps, so that is consistent. Because we would like the instructional framework to be successful as well. We can't just be, you know, just throw out there as we, we decide what to do, but actually have a framework, have discussion, and what are we moving forward on? Because it's a team decision.
You may not be aware that in 2001, a committee of parents, teachers, classified staff, principals, and administrators developed a site council training package.
Yes.
That was piloted at several schools. And I remember visiting Mount Taper and doing a little bit of training many years ago.
I served on that site council with the person who's sitting at the dais right now.
Yes. She was my site council member.
And I actually think most of it is still pretty relevant. It just never got implemented by PPS, obviously, since we're still hearing that some schools don't have site councils. There's very little accountability around site councils. I just want to offer that as a resource going forward.
So I'll take note on that and make sure that we also provide site councils some training at the start. Thank you. And yes, we provide those trainings at Mount Taper. So I kind of exactly, with PTA president, PAT president, and PFDC council members, too.
And so then we get into summer, and obviously, this is when all the moves, moves occur of moving staff, moving equipment, IT teardown setups, we finish the facility upgrades, we finish hiring, staff professional development is largely during the summertime, as folks are aware. And of course, we do all the activities that are normal to our start-of-school process and opening the doors. So those are, again, just some of the key milestones from a seasonal basis, but we can certainly provide more intricate detail as to specific work streams or tasks or coordination, if so requested. All right. So the departments that are involved in this put together budget requests in order to consolidate overall budget needs for this endeavor. And the big request that you might anticipate is really coming from facilities, the Office of School Modernization, around the upgrades to the buildings for Tubman and Roseway Heights, some upgrades to Humboldt. Again, a lot of that is to invest in delivering on the ed spec needs for the classrooms. Science labs in particular are a very big expense here. Some new route planning for transportation, just some anticipation of work around nutrition services. For teaching and learning.
Can I ask a question on facilities? So are we expecting that any of this work would be bond funded? Because several of the items are priority items on the 2017 bond roofs and securities. So, but you haven't broken that down in terms of?
I'd like to.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
That's a very good question. Within teaching and learning, finishing the framework development, the first phases of that development involved more than 200 educators across our system, but now we have to finish that out. And there's some expenses around that. Certainly expenses around supports for special education and making sure that we deliver on that continuum of services that's been designed by special education, curriculum materials for the new schools, library, maker space experiences, the IB program development, site council engagement activities, and of course, a strong investment in professional development activities as well. Within IT, a lot of this corresponds with IT infrastructure upgrades, teardowns and setups, enterprise system configurations, as were mentioned earlier, and new classroom technology bundles and student devices to support the learning experience as designed, and some substantial infrastructure, a lot around physical security needs for Roseway Heights, Tubman, and Humboldt as well. And for communications and community engagement, so there's some investment around extended communication supports, working through this intense period of time to complete and communicate feeder pattern proposal and implementation plan, community engagement events that occur throughout the year, as well as just some direct mail communication. So those are some of the items for the budget requests. But as was stated earlier by the board chair, I believe that we would expect to come back with the details around that and how we would break apart the different funding sources for some of these asks.
And are those figures inclusive of translations, given?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent question.
So I have just, can I ask an overall question? So I'm fully supportive of all the expenditures. They look like they're a pretty comprehensive list of what's needed in order to get the schools started and operating as sort of. in order to get the schools started and operating as sort of fully functioning, successful middle schools, which is how we want to set them up for success. I'm concerned that, when I had a conversation with Superintendent Youssef, that he described that part of this potentially, the 10 million, would be paid for with debt. And I'm curious if you can tell me what the split of the 10 million is, or what the plan is.
I cannot tell you what that potential split is. But again, would expect to come back with him.
So I'd like to make a request that, given that this, we're being asked to approve it by August 29? By August 29, I'd like an answer tomorrow, because it seems like it's already been contemplated. I'm gonna be concerned if there's a debt component. We had a $482 million bond in 2012, a $790 million bond earlier this year that we've known these two schools are gonna be, were gonna be opened, that we should have budgeted. So I'd be concerned, but I'd like to know tomorrow, just given the timeline.
That was gonna be my question as well, where's the money coming from?
So just a finer point on how much would be bond-funded or bond-eligible as well?
Right, and the bonds that have already been passed versus future bonds? It's, I guess I'd want to find points, because I know in the past, the district has, when they didn't have bonds, did advance borrowing. So if this is gonna be bond-funded, the expectation would be that it would be the current bonds.
Absolutely understood, and, you know, we've certainly been having those conversations already, and just need to do the final loop back and deliver that in the right way.
Other questions? Director Anthony?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Parker, I'm sorry, I have a more fundamental question. How is this budget put together?
So last year, during the work of the middle school implementation team under the direction of the former Assistant Superintendent, former interim superintendent, project teams put together budgets at that time to scope out the vision and the ed specs and the needs that were anticipated. Over the summer, we refined those, so I can certainly speak from my area of departmental leadership within IT. We looked at what was needed with those buildings to deliver on the specs for, excuse me, the specs for physical security, so a lot of our upgrades are there, network infrastructure to support increased use of devices in those buildings. So that's an example of how we put them together. But really deferring to what are we carrying out in other schools? And now that we're onboarding two brand-new schools with larger enrollments, in a sense, what would it take to deliver on a middle school experience?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm afraid I have an obligation to point out, on the first three items, operations, office of teaching and learning, IT. The items that you list there do not add up to the totals. And it makes a difference in the grand total of over $230,000.
We identified the- Under or over? I believe we identified the large buckets with the anticipation that we would come back with the refinement from each of the departments and a recommendation for how that's allocated. Thank you for that.
Anybody else?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank you for all the work you've put into this and trying to come up with a very well-crafted plan that's timely, that's deliverable. And I don't want to lose sight of that. And there's a famous old cartoon that's been around probably since the Stone Ages, where it says, "Plan ahead," except for by the time the person got over here, they didn't have enough room for the A and the D, and it gets all kind of crunched in. We're, and let me set the context. Back in 2010, members of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer were looking at the impact of eliminating the lottery transfers from one neighborhood's school to another, because we thought it was creating inequities. What we discovered instead is that if we eliminated those kind of transfers, that some overcrowded schools would become even more overcrowded, because the transfer system was actually dropping their enrollment. And that some under-enrolled schools would become even more under-enrolled. And I think Harrison Park and King were our two examples, because they were actually having a net of transfers coming in, a net positive. And what we realized instead was the problem wasn't transfers per se, although that wasn't helping. It was that boundaries needed to be adjusted in many schools across the district. And we, and Superintendent, or Superintendent, Director Moore and I, boy, did you, congratulations in your promotion.
I'd like the check, but I wouldn't like the job.
Yeah. Director Moore and I were on that committee, and we put together a presentation and advocated for district-wide redrawing of boundaries. The district instead chose to, said they didn't have enough capacity, and so they were taking, going to take on boundary hotspots one at a time. The first one was, went relatively smoothly. The next one was explosive. And in fact, the middle of it, there was a delay for a year to let people cool down. And then it was resolved. And the third one was the Jefferson Cluster, which completely blew up. We had hundreds of community members and teachers testify against a piecemeal process and testify for district-wide enrollment balancing. The district, and at that point, the district was going to go ahead with its initial proposal. That's when an ad hoc group of the community members, parents, and teachers came together and put together, known as the Jefferson Critical Friends, came together with an alternative proposal. Superintendent Smith took seven of our recommendations, forwarded them to the board, and they were adopted in a resolution. And one of those had to do with forging ahead with district-wide balancing of enrollment. The district then engaged Portland State University to essentially come up with a master plan for the process. We took on the transfer process first, so SACIT was kind of reinstated, reinvigorated, addressed some of the issues around transfers, but not all of them. There's a list of at least half a dozen more ready to be taken on. And then the DEBRAC committee was created to do district-wide rebalancing. And here we are, three years after that committee was created, and there is no work plan for how we would do that on the East Side. Instead, staff has come back again and again with piecemeal processes, a piecemeal process, one bite at a time. And this is where we end up with the plan ahead. What happens to the boundaries that you're going to redraw within these clusters when we look at Peninsula, which does not have a right-sized boundary? What happens when, should we decide that Aster becomes a K5? And we may, we may not, in order to increase Georgia's enrollment, so that it has a robust program? And there has to be a boundary adjustment there, which will impact surrounding schools. What's the feeder pattern gonna be for Madison to ensure that it has a robust enrollment? Because it is still below the enrollment, target enrollment from high school redesign back in-
2010.
2010. Is there going to be a second middle school? Which one will that be? What kind of rebalancing will we have to do around that? What happens if we then set up these two clusters and come back in a year or so and go, "Oh, yes, what, we have to change boundaries again." And maybe even feeder patterns again in order to make the whole East Side work? So I want to make it clear that I met with interim superintendent Awad in June and made these points clear, that I thought you were going about this in the wrong direction, that it needed to be the entire East Side. I think, I don't want to speak for DEBRAC, but I think it's pretty clear where their sentiments lie. I made that clear. I came up with a list of the data that I thought we would need in order to get that job done. And getting that data out has not been a priority, and we still don't have a work plan. I feel no assurance that we're doing the best we can here is gonna get us anywhere near a stable enrollment pattern where all of our schools on the East Side have a robust enrollment. So I don't know what to do, because I feel like by staff ignoring my advice and really DEBRAC's advice, not only last year, and we had Superintendent McCain and Chris Russo come to us in May, hat in hand, with a, looking pretty sorry, saying, we, basically, paraphrasing, "We screwed up, because we realized we needed to get started on this middle school stuff earlier, and we haven't had DEBRAC meeting for months, when we could have to work on this." And now here we are again, a couple of months over the summer, where I think we could have gotten work done, and maybe at least gotten the big pieces together to show that, yes, the pattern that you're going to propose to us may work for the entire East Side, but maybe it won't, and we don't know that. So what you've done, and I, not you personally-
Oh, so thank you, Director Bailey.
And we've talked about it, this isn't at you personally at all. You know, you're late to this party. What staff have done is put us between a rock and a hard space. Because if we do anything to hold up this train at all, then it looks like we're the bad guys in holding up the middle schools opening up a year from September. And yet, the other alternative is for you to go ahead and come up with quite a risk, I think, of setting up a system that then needs to be maybe radically changed in order to work for the entire East Side. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. So we know with interim Superintendent McCain's proposal last June had Vernon hanging out there as a K8. That wasn't by design. That was just, they're not part of where we're looking at. And yet, there was no solution then. It was sort of an outlier, hanging out there with nowhere to go. That's the kind of thing we could end up with, and that's just not gonna cut the mustard. So I'm extremely frustrated.
Anybody else? Not, I want to recognize-
It's an old joke among DEBRAC, but I feel like if you gave us the data and a computer and a map and a weekend, we could vet this thing. We could come up with a very rough map and purposes for each school. And we could say, "Looks good," or, "Wow, this isn't gonna work, and here's why." But DEBRAC has asked for data, I've asked for data, and it has been forthcoming. It has been prioritized. We've been blown off.
Go ahead.
Okay, I don't want to pile on, but I'm gonna pile on.
Actually, I would ask not to pile on, because I just want to note that I really recognize Director Bailey, I really recognize your frustration, but I do want to note there's been, as you noted, that this is not directed at any of the staff that are sitting here before us, that there's been a lot of different players. We've had three different superintendents. And so certainly since July, but I want to just make sure that we're not, it's not, we're not saying there's one group of people, that this has been a collective non-response, and-
It's been a long-term train wreck, yes.
I just want to recognize that, because I think it's not fair to-
Laura and I talked about this today, and I'm, you know, this isn't personal, and she's, "I know." And it's, we're clear on that, I hope we're clear on that.
I would love to have the resources needed to do all the wonderful things that this boarding community wants us to do, so my heart's in it too.
And again, this isn't your responsibility, but it was somebody's. DEBRAC has been supposedly a priority for this district for several years. Why wasn't there a work plan with a budget that would have been part of the budget to make this happen?
I totally agree with what Scott's saying. And I just want to highlight one thing, one that I think there is a crying need for. As we, you know, move headlong into this middle school implementation, we need to get information about the focus option plan. And that has apparently been, apparently it's out there, but nobody's seen it. So whatever the logjam is on the information flow, somebody needs to get rid of those logjams. And, I mean, I'm just gonna put it out there. I am desperate for these new middle schools to work. I am desperate. I am desperate for the K8s to work for kids. I want, I want to vote yes. But it's gotta be doable for me and still be able to look at myself in the mirror. So I'm pleading, if you have information, share it. If you have a plan for, you know, this is very high level. And, you know, people will be able, people will, people will understand. A lot of people have been dealing with the boundary kerfuffle and the reconfiguration and all the rest of it for years and years and years. What they want is a plan, what they want is some hope. They want to know that this is gonna be doable, that this is gonna be fixed. And they want to know that there's a, they want ballpark dates, you know, "Tell me when, tell me when." And many of us have been asking for much more detailed information forever. So what you're hearing is intense frustration born of years of PPS not coming through. And I want this to be, you know, we're all up here, we're getting a new superintendent. I want this to be, you know, we're turning a new leaf, things are gonna, things are gonna happen. I need more than this to make me feel like it is gonna happen.
Thank you, Director Konstant, and then- Director Sparza, welcome. Thank you for coming straight from the airport.
Look who snuck in.
And I'm gonna ask that this be the last comment, since we're bumping up against our deadline. So you get the last word.
I can hear you, thank you. Hello. So in reference to, you know, the things that Director Moore was just talking about, focus options and all, I mean, they're listed out here. So that, there's many things that are part of this fall under teaching and learning. So now that I'm back in town, the plan is for me to meet with them and to really develop this plan with a timeline. So, and I know that I think we have something on- So, and I know that I think we have something on the books for maybe next week or so that we will start sitting down and kind of addressing the issues and parse them out through the teaching and learning process. This, as well as the balanced literacy framework, so there's a lot to do with the instructional piece that we will tackle there.
Great, and we started the presentation an hour ago by talking about sort of what the board needed to do, and the two big pieces from the board committees, one was the enrollment forecasting, and the other was the teaching and learning. So we're glad you've arrived just in time to take that piece, so. Thank you very much, both of you, for the presentation, and I think you can sense our eagerness and the urgency with which we are looking forward to the work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. May I just address one thing, because I think that as staff, I also want to share that our heart is really into serving all of our kids, and as a person of color and who have gone through experience in our schools, that's what our goals as well. So we will work collaboratively with the board and with everybody to make sure that it happens. So, I just want to share that. And also, I have OTF timeline that I share that we'll be sharing with you as well, Dr. Brown.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So the next agenda item is a discussion of services to families and community, a draft complaint policy and process. I'm going to ask Sharon Reese, the interim chief of human resources, to come forward. Thank you Sharon. But before you start, a couple of things I want to frame up on this particular agenda item. First, I want to note that this is not an hour discussion, that was a mistake, so it'll be shortened that. And I want to note that this is a discussion item, it's not a first reading of a policy. We're very deliberate in how we approach this, so we're not taking action, we're having a first reading. There has been a suggestion that we pull the agenda item as much work needs to be done, both in terms of content and process. However, I think it's important for the board to begin its work on this policy. I know that many other people up here in the dais have been, when they were parent activists, have in some form of another, participated in the complaint process with the school district. So we, as parents, I think, know firsthand that having a functioning complaint process is really important to the health of the district. We want a streamlined process that results in complaints being resolved in a timely way versus just basically having people give up at a certain point because they get frustrated. So a streamlined process where you get some resolution, it may not always be what parents and community want, the resolution, but that they, things are resolved and addressed, and also something that complies with state law. Before we start the discussion, I'm sorry, I'm going to give all the caveats, hopefully. There's a couple of clarifications. The board received some materials, and I think it's really important, there are some nomenclature issues of what we have in the book that I just want to clarify. So, tab six is the current complaint policy, and at this time, no change has been recommended, so just to be clear. So, no change have been recommended in the current policy. Tab seven is a brand-new administrative directive, and that's really the way in which the complaint policy is implemented at a more detailed staff level. Tab eight, there's a document called a complaint hotline policy. It's not actually a board policy, it's more a protocol or a process, so I think we should be clear that that's not any sort of policy that's being recommended, it's just maybe misnamed. And then, tab nine is a complementary materials and not part of the policy either. I want to let the board know that I'm going to be appointing a board task force tonight that will review and make recommendations on this, and other board operational policies. So, for example, we have a number of governance policies that have been recommended. I'm going to chair the task force, and Director Rosen and Moore will serve on it. And then the process we're going to follow, just so everybody understands, again, I think there, in the past, some things came to the board, and if you weren't paying attention, and one night something got adopted, and the next day it got rolled out. And that's not going to be the case with this board in terms of policies. So, just so everybody's clear what the process is going to be, there's going to be a discussion tonight. This is an opportunity for people to raise questions, and I know people have already submitted a fair number of questions about the policies and the administrative directives, so it's a chance to sort of surface issues. That's, we're going to refer the policy and the draft AD to the task force. There'll be work at the task force level, there'll be engagement with the task force, with community members who hopefully will tap a lot of people who've had experience with the current complaint process, you know, what worked, what didn't. Then, that theoretically will be incorporated into the policy and the AD. We'll look to legal counsel to make sure that if something has a first reading, that it complies with the current state law, so we're not going to have a first reading on anything that doesn't comply with state law. After that, there'll be an extended period for public comment, and then if the board is ready to adopt it, a second reading and implementation. So I just want to share that process, and I think if this board can hire a superintendent in 42 days, we certainly should be able to improve our complaint process. So, I think we're looking forward to the work, and note this is something that, for a lot of members in the community, and myself included, and Director Constam and Director Rosen, we were part of an issue with the district that spurred the initial change in the complaint process. So, there's a lot of people sitting up here who, as parents, have been interested in seeing it improved, so we're eager to engage in the work. So with that, I'm going to ask you to present what you have.
Okay, great.
Or start the discussion.
So I will start the discussion. Thanks for the setup there. The complaint policy and procedures are understandably and rightly of significant interest to students-
I'm sorry, can you both introduce yourselves just for the record?
Oh, yes.
It was so long ago that I called you up.
My name is Sharon Reese, I am serving as the interim chief human resources officer.
Jim Harris, general counsel.
Okay, so, of significant interest, understandably, rightly so, it should be to students, to families, to staff, to the community, and of course, to the board. I'm also a mother, as well as the interim CHRO. I have two kids at Portland Public Schools, and I care deeply about this process, and about how Portland Public Schools shows up in the community, and shows up to its students and to its staff. We best serve, goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, we best serve the interests of the students, of the staff, of the community by having an effective, a reliable, a thorough, and responsive complaint intake process, investigative process, and resolution process. Those are all the components that are critical to doing this well. The alternative to effective, reliable, thorough, and responsive is not good, issues don't get resolved. I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but students and staff are disempowered to speak up, we lose public trust, and we expose the district to liability. I think those are preventable failures. I don't think that the results of investigations and the resolution will always be accepted by all parties, right? Or well-received by all parties, but that shouldn't be because of a lack of process or high-quality standards or excellence in the intake, the investigation, and the resolution. In addition, as you have identified, Director Brim Edwards, in addition to serving staff, serving students, serving our communities, we have legal obligations, contractual, statutory, regulatory, and whatever, our processes and our policies must meet those obligations. I would identify those as the floor, right? This is the framework below which we cannot fall. Layered on top of that must be high-quality and effective processes that can't necessarily be reduced to paper or to writing, right? Sitting on top of that framework must be high-quality judgment, collaborative processes, collaboration between departments, and collaboration with the board. Right now, district staff with representatives across different functions are engaged in ongoing work to review and approve our complaint process. We want you to be invited in and work closely with you and the task force that you have already identified to improve and to have a high level of scrutiny and public accountability for what that process is. I know you received a packet of materials, I will tell you that I received, it's very much in draft form. I think all of the caveats that Director Brim Edwards identified emphasize that this is in draft form and an iterative process. In fact, I received this packet of materials after you did, it's still going through human resources review as well. One example of the work that is ongoing is the adoption of Lighthouse, as the outside vendor Stephanie Harper referenced this earlier. This is the opportunity to improve our intake, right, of intake, investigation, and resolution, the opportunity to improve our intake process through an outside vendor who can accept complaints in any number of ways in 140 languages or more, right? 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That's one of many steps that we are, that has been adopted and one of many steps that we are considering. I know that Jim Harris is working with ODE on identifying what are our baseline obligations, and I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yes, I did contact the ODE. I was new to this process, and I wanted to know what their feedback was and what their view of our current process is, and I was surprised to learn that they have not accepted an appeal from Portland Public Schools since November of 2014, when we adopted the current policy. Now, they have ruled on some complaints since then, but those were filed prior to the new policy. Some of the items that we've looked at, that doesn't mean that our AD is up to speed, just means that our overall policy is accepted currently by the ODE. Some of the things that they, that we looked at, and as she's already pointed out, was the first thing was, we wanted to do 24/7, that anybody could file a complaint. So, this will allow us to take a phone call, you can file a complaint by webpage or by fax. One of the ODE requirements in January of 2018 will be that each school district that has a website have the complaint on the first page, or one of the first pages. And we've talked to our IT department, and we're not satisfied with that. What we're trying to do, and what they're trying to do right now, is have the ability to make the complaint from any PPS webpage. The second thing is, it will be available in over 140 languages. We have already translated about three to five complaint forms in the same languages that are represented here tonight. The one advantage to this is that when a caller or a website files a complaint, we will get a verbatim statement as to what that complaint is. That's extremely important. There's no he said, she said. The complaint will be read back to the party filing the complaint, if it's by phone, and they will confirm that that is exactly what they said. There will be a log available of each complaint, so that we can go back and immediately, or very fast, obtain a listing of what the complaints have been. And the ODE updates are included. In some cases, those have been put in verbatim from the ODE, particularly in the formal complaint process. The ombudsman role has been clarified. One of the problems that we currently have is the ombudsman's role is not fully articulated. An ombudsman is independent, confidential, and separate from the formal complaint process. We sort of have our ombudsman embedded in the formal complaint process, that's usually not how it's done. So, we have a coordinator that's available that will shepherd the complaints through the formal process, and all of those items, with the exception of the webpage, are available now. That is the timeline.
All of which is to say, there's a lot of work to be done, there's important input from this board, as well as other interested stakeholders. This is a cross-functional, across many different departments as well, and we want to move quickly on it as well. So, we're looking for your guidance, input, we want to open the dialogue and collaborate on this, the processes and the policy.
Discussion, questions, Director Rosen?
So I just wanted to say thank you for the package being put together, because I think it represents the baseline of where the staff is, but I'm really looking forward to the task force taking a really deep dive into this, which in my mind means everything's on the table. This has been kind of a thorn in our side for several years now, and I think there's a great opportunity here. I think we've kind of, in four years, probably heard everything, and this is a great opportunity to straighten this out, and maybe even on some things, starting from scratch, like the policy before we even write an administrative directive. So, I just wanted to say thanks, but also put on the table that I think we're going to be doing a really deep dive into this, and I hope it's going to be an expeditious process, so.
I appreciate that, and I think everything is on the table. It should be on the table.
Director Anthony?
I'd like to make a point in discussion. Janaye Jamison, who is one of our teachers at Benson Tag, marvelous, marvelous teacher, she has a tagline that she says to all the students, and I think it's multiple times a day, "Never accept no from anyone who never had the authority to tell you yes in the first place." And as the complaint policy is laid out now, it appears to me that it pretty much deliberately directs people away from staff who would have the authority to say yes to something. And I'm very concerned about that. And as I see it playing out, this really tends to impact our low socioeconomic and our communities of color very severely. So, thank you.
I think what can easily get lost in looking at, you know, how do we make sure that we have a good thorough process in place, is that the first stop is always school-based resolution, and that is, you know, the person who has the authority to resolve hopefully most concerns, but what we rightfully are focusing on here is those times when that's not possible, that doesn't work, we need to make sure that there is recourse for people, that they know what it is, that it's easy to navigate, but still not lose sight of that school-based, community-based resolution really being ideal for all concerned when it's possible.
I think the, what I would respond to that is that the complaint process is a formal way of offering up a channel where you speak truth to power, right? Because the people in, with the- Because the people in, with the authority to make the decisions are not the ones against whom you have to make, they are not the ones complaining because they're making the decisions. It's about having a channel to address decisions that you disagree with or impact that you weren't anticipating or misconduct or all of that. So it's important that it's accessible to those who have the hardest time accessing sources of authority.
So just to build on that, I mean, you know, ideally, we'd meet and we'd create a policy that's streamlined, that's effective, that meets state law, but that would be rarely used. And, you know, I think one of the things that the task force will look at is what kinds of things can we do upstream so that we don't have our community feeling that that's the only way to get a resolution or an answer, that you have to file a complaint because it's actually quite unsatisfactory, I think, for most people to have to go into the complaint process. So really looking at how we can communicate on the front end and both at the school base and at the district level of other ways in which people can get their, either, you know, communicate what they need, what they feel like they want to communicate or get, you know, basic questions answered or basic policies thing, you know, conflicts resolved, often conflicts that are just inherent in our own processes. So that's what I think is sort of the bigger prize here is going upstream and trying to resolve things. And that's not a reason we're not going to fix the complaint process because we are going to get it fixed and make it functional, but really ideally, it wouldn't have to be used that often.
A great component of resolution is what's the feedback to leadership, right? What lessons can we learn as a district, as leaders, and hopefully we, hopefully that's continuous learning and improvement.
And that, I think that's a really important point and something that has been missing, which is that everything is, a lot of things do get satisfactorily resolved for people through the ombudsman or whatever, but we don't have a process by which we're able to learn from the clustering of those concerns and those experiences. Everything is just handled as a one-off and, you know, what we need is to be able to see that certain like types of complaints are arising, or maybe there are certain types of complaints are arising in the same places, and then really be able to elevate that to figure out, well, what does this tell us about our system and that we need to fix on a broader level.
And that's exactly, you know, what I'm thinking about, that so many of the problems that have occurred are really kind of the lack of systems. So we do understand that this is a time that we'll be digging deep to look at, you know, what systems we put in place that need to be different, how we streamline and organize and how we create visions for these systems.
We have a complaint review team that meets weekly at this point, and one of the items on our agenda is to debrief lessons learned from particularly difficult investigations.
I just have a follow-up question, Mr. Harris. I don't think I quite understood your answer on the ODE compliance. So we have a policy in the packet that's the 2014 policy. Have we actually asked either internal or external counsel with expertise in the current state law to look at it and recommend specific changes to the policy? Or were you saying that the current policy, in your judgment, is compliant with current state law?
I called the ODE and asked them about our current policy. They stated that our current policy was acceptable as it was, that they had not accepted an appeal since it was adopted in 2014. So I didn't go further than that with the current policy. However, we did talk at length about our AD. And one of the things which I didn't mention earlier is there appears to be some confusion on some specific type of complaints regarding personnel. And with regard to this, the complaint can actually be split with part of it being handled as a formal complaint and part of it being handled by our Personnel Department. And I was advised of that by the ODE. And that is one thing that we've tried to build into this draft that I don't think was clear before, and I think that gave rise to some of the issues that you were seeing.
Can you tell me where in the draft that would, where we'd find that particular issue?
If you look at the bottom of the informal complaint process and at the bottom of the ombudsman's process, we refer to what can and can't be appealed or what can and can't be split. Appealed's not the right word, split. And those are the items that I'm told that part of it can go to an HR function and part of it to a formal complaint process. So you can actually be running two processes on the same complaint at the same time.
So what you said is that ODE has looked at our policy and it's compliant with current state law?
I didn't ask them specifically that question. I asked them about our current policy and if they had issues with it. And their response was no, but we can certainly give it to somebody else to take a look at.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're starting with a policy that's compliant with whatever the changes have been made.
Would you like me to do that? I can do.
Please, I think that'd be a great starting point.
I will do that.
Director Moore?
Yeah, I had a great many questions and concerns.
That's why you're on the task force.
Which I will, I'll defer to, you know, I'm looking forward to the task force getting it, you know, getting its hand on this. And I just wanted to, I think the complaint policy is an opportunity for us to demonstrate that we really are going to do business differently. And I often say that 80% of any policy is the implementation. So while we may have a policy that passes legal muster, if the actual processes that are associated with that policy don't embody kind of basic principles that I think we would like to, that I think we would like to have underpinning PPS, transparency, simplicity, equity, and justice. I mean, that's what we ought to be striving for. So the workflow or the, what was it, workflow? No, flow, flow chart, flow chart, sorry. So the flow chart that was included in the materials certainly to my mind doesn't satisfy the simplicity goal. And I think there are, well, I'll leave it for the task force, but, you know, I think we need to rethink this altogether. So I'm looking forward to us sinking our teeth into this. But I think we have an opportunity here to demonstrate to people that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be, we haven't found the right word for it, consumer-oriented, client or, I don't know, something. But, you know, we're gonna be approaching complaints from a very different perspective. This is an opportunity to learn and to improve, and I'm going to be looking for a process that would lead to that.
And I'll reiterate, I think everything is and should be on the table, and it ought to withstand extraordinary scrutiny. It should, right? It should be that good. So I welcome the scrutiny, the input, the collaboration, the challenges, and I certainly welcome your interest because I agree that there is, when we get it wrong, it goes very badly. When we get it right, we have an opportunity to build trust with the community and to set, to live values that we want to demonstrate to the community and to our students.
Anyone else? If not, thank you, and I think we're looking forward to the work ahead and to do it expeditiously and with a student and family focus. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we have two agenda items, the committee work plans, the board committee and conference reports, and I'm just going to combine them. And based on earlier communication with the board, I have two directors who have committee reports, who have had committee meetings, so I'm going to ask either Director Bailey or Director Moore to kick it off. Five minutes, no more.
I have four instead of five. Very quickly, the enrollment and forecasting board committee had its first-ever meeting a little over a week ago. Most of our first meeting was figuring out what we're about because we haven't had any previous work. We also had a short report from Director Moore on her and Director Sparza Brown's meeting with community members about the right of return. But basically, the committee items that came up had to do with enrollment and DEBRAC's work, transfer policy, things that I've mentioned already, looking at student assignment in general, and particularly pursuing, and the board has already been on record a couple of years ago wanting to take a look at the SOF neighborhood model and models like that for alternative ways of doing student assignment, looking at enrollment trends in general to keep up with, but, you know, making sure all our schools have robust enrollments and are capable of providing a good, if not great, program for all our kids. We also touched on a number of issues that will overlap into other committee work, for example, middle schools that we're seeing already tonight have an overlap with teaching and learning. We want to look at working much more closely with the city around land use planning and housing because that affects enrollment coming up and affects where, what our schools need to be prepared to adjust to, and that ties in with intergovernmental relations. Of course, everything ties in with budget. I'm not going to go through all the gory details, but to give you a flavor of where we're heading and minutes should be, that meeting should be posted fairly soon.
You also piloted the new template for the committees?
Oh, that new template that I haven't quite filled out yet.
Okay.
That one, yeah.
So for the rest of the committee chairs, there's going to be a template that everybody has that should give visibility to sort of on a monthly basis, but also on an annual basis, sort of what the committee's priorities are and what it's going to be working on.
Could this be sent out?
Yes. We were waiting for feedback from the Guinea pig committee, which was Director Bailey's.
It looks pretty basic, just pretty simple information, giving guidance to what we're about, so.
It'll be good to have that uniform. Yeah, so Dr. Parker was going to send it, I'd say, out at the revised version, so every committee chair should get it, but it should give you the ability and all the, should give the committee chairs and the staff leads, both like a common template, but it should be a template across the board that everybody's, and also gives the community visibility of what the work is and, you know, when the meetings are and just provide a lot of consistency, much more consistency across the board. So maybe, Roseanne, do you think you could work with Dr. Parker to get out the slightly revised work plan template to the full board, so for all the committee chairs? Thanks.
And Scott, I wanted to add one thing for your consideration. Have you, did you talk at all about enrollment verification and address fraud? I know we have a couple of pilots going on right now in the district, and this is a significant issue.
Yeah, Judy Brenner, I didn't realize that was going on. Of course, Jason's in the back of the room nodding his head. He knows everything before anybody knows anything, that there is an enrollment verification pilot going on.
I'm not sure how many schools it is, just two schools, yes.
Selwood and Lincoln, yes, that's going on now. I didn't realize, so that's certainly part of, certainly in our wheelhouse.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks for, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Director Moore?
So the FAO committee also met. FAO stands for Finance Audit and Operations Committee. So it's all the really exciting juicy stuff. And we have four members on the committee. I am the chair, and the other board members are Paul Anthony, Amy Constan and Mike Rosen. We met on August 9th and talked about four agenda items, and I'm going to try to go through these fairly quickly. First was the public records policy, and we had been asked to provide some overall guidance to those who are developing, to the staff who are developing a public records policy and process. And we had a good discussion, and I think where we landed was essentially that the default position should be to release records unless there are statutory or human resources reasons not to. So the default position should be toward transparency. And that will be coming back to us in September or October as the staff work on refining the current policy and coming up with a new process. Did you have anything?
Well, I was just going to add that in that discussion where we were talking about really the default being transparency, it was in the context of releasing things when there were legitimate exceptions that would legally allow us not to.
Releasing things unless there were?
No, when there were exceptions that could be employed to keep them, our default position is, was, which was the will of the members in the conversation, the default position is to release as much as possible even when those mechanisms are available, allowing that there's no, there are no legal or otherwise good reasons not to.
Essentially a bias towards disclosure.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, the second issue was the community eligibility provision, which is often referred to as a CEP program. It's from Nutrition Services, and this is the, this is the system that allows for provision of free lunches to an entire school. And it became, it became public knowledge widely reported about, probably about a month ago now, that a number of schools, 12 schools, that had been, that had been using the CEP program to provide lunch to all students regardless of their socioeconomic status, were going to lose that designation. And we got a presentation from Nutrition Services. In fact, the change in their status happened a year ago, but it was not widely publicized. For the last year, PPS has been, or during the 2016-17 school year, PPS actually used general fund money to provide free lunches for everybody. But for this coming school year, the 12 schools are going to revert to the kind of standard system of families being asked to fill out forms, asking for free and reduced lunch status based on their income levels.
And can I just say, from the enrollment and forecasting committee's point of view, this subject has never come up with DEBRAC, that by changing boundaries and configuration that it would trigger changes in how that it would trigger changes in how CEP is formulated?
Yep.
So that's, that's, adds a whole new level of complexity to our work.
Yeah, and I think going forward, we're gonna have to be really cognizant of the impacts, kind of the widespread impacts of changes around boundaries and reconfiguration and all kinds of things.
Which means if we do boundaries piecemeal, we're continually, annually changing, having to go back and recalculate the formula for CEP, and that does not work in favor of our kids.
Right.
What is the plan for, because I realize there will be many families, I believe, who will not want to complete paperwork that might put them at risk, or families that, you know, may not quite qualify. What's the plan for, and I think it's gonna be a significant amount of students?
So, so the basic plan is to try to blanket schools and communicate, over-communicate with families about filling out the forms. And one of the things that the Nutrition Services clarified was that the information that is provided on these free and reduced lunch forms is not shared with any other government entity. It does not leave this building. So theoretically at least, immigration status should not be a barrier. Now, that's...
Right, I think it's still going to be a barrier, and then my, the second part of that, remember, I think that there'll be some families who may not quite qualify, you know, for food, well, it may still be an issue for them, and the cost of food, so do we have an alternative way of covering meals for many of our students?
There, we probably need to get, I mean, if you really want details, we probably need to get Nutrition Services back, but I think the short answer, I think the short answer is, we are dependent, we are now, for these schools, we are now dependent on these forms, which is what happens in all of our schools with the exception of the 13 other schools that are still covered by the CEP program. And I, I had a long discussion with Nutrition Services even before the committee meeting, and they were, they were very clear that they are really working overtime to try to get as many families as humanly possible to sign up. Will they, will they get 100% of the families? No. And are they gonna capture everybody who really could use food assistance? No. And I could go into a long rant about the federal policies and how low the federal poverty level is.
Right.
But I think it is probably not fiscally possible for us to supplement, to provide additional funding out of general fund monies at this point, to continue on with the whole school model for these 12 schools. They did work up numbers, and it's a pretty staggering amount of money.
You know, I'm saying that I think that we need to continue to brainstorm and address the issue, because the reality is, we can, you know, we could throw up our hands if they don't register, if they don't fill out the forms, you know, they can't have food, but we can't educate children that haven't gotten their basic needs met too, so I'm wondering about looking at partnerships and grants. I mean, I think we really have to look broad and wide to figure out how to...
Right. So they are, they're gonna be coming back to the committee in a couple of months. The deadline for, the deadline for applying is October 11th, and so for the first, until October 11th, every student who shows up is gonna get food, so without question. So we're trying to get as many families to sign up as possible because that means we get federal assistance.
Right.
But truth be told, there is a new, there's a new state statute saying that no child can be denied food.
Great, at the den, by figuring out that plan.
However, comma, we're, I mean, the board's gonna have to pay attention to this because there are gonna be fiscal impacts.
Right.
And we don't yet know what those will be.
So in terms of reaching out to the communities for the forms, have we worked with our community-based, culturally specific, community-based organizations to help with that?
My understanding is, to some degree, yes. They are translating everything. They are now gonna be doing not only emails, but they're also gonna start to text.
Yeah, I would definitely reach out to those organizations to help us, because they communicate so well with the families.
They are doing that, and we're relying on, they're relying on several third parties to spread the message, so it's not just coming directly from the district. The county is helping on that. And the other thing I wanted to say was, as part of our discussion, Nutrition Services was going to make it much more prominent in their communication to families that this information is totally confidential. It was either not included before, or maybe a little footnote, but to really put it front and center.
It's on the form, but it's very small.
So it'd be great for the committee to ask for, as we head into the fall, just sort of continue to get trending information, because for a lot of families, so this is gonna be a whole new thing, like they didn't have to in the past fill out the forms, so I think getting trending so that we can address it if we're seeing just really low rates, much lower than we would expect.
They've got a really impressive communication plan, I have to say, and they get, you know, they were talking about, they get daily updates on signup rates. So it's, I walked out of my meeting with them and the committee meeting, and I'm, I'm pretty impressed with the communication plan they have.
I'm thinking I could also make suggestions of certain radio programs and things that also will really help get the news out bilingually and to other communities, so, okay.
Okay, so...
And the kids do get breakfast.
Yes, the free breakfast is still available, that is, that's a separate program, it's not part of CEP, that will still be going on, so it's at least something. The other two things, really quick, we got an update on transportation, and we got a presentation about a month ago, I think, to the full board about transportation, and this was kind of a status update on a lot of the changes that are happening. And it sounds like there has been a lot of progress in streamlining the operations for transportation, and we're hoping, everybody's hoping, that with the changes that have taken place, that there are more bus drivers, more buses, more routes, so the hope is that parents and students should see some significant improvement in reliability of bus service with the new school year, and more responsiveness in terms of communication. So one of the big things is that there is now going to be, there are gonna be telephones available with people actually, actual people actually manning these telephones, so that if something comes up and a parent needs to talk to somebody, there's gonna be a human person on the other side. And I should probably say, it's not gonna be perfect, there are gonna be glitches, but it sounds like they've, they've made a lot of progress since last year, and then...
Just on that topic, did they build in some performance metrics into the contracts, or the, are we still mid-contract and these are just...
Yes, so we are still mid-contract, but the contract will be up, let me put it this way, the contract, the life of the contract will be ending at the end of the school year. So there are, there are negotiations already happening about future contracts and some changes that we might want to put into a new contract in terms of expectations for performance.
And, and they have already seen some, some changes and some additional resources put out by First Student in response to the concerns about, not just concerns around the students, but concerns around contract non-compliance, so they're, they have responded. It's a little more carrot than stick, I think, but it's made a difference so far, I'd say.
And then the last item on the agenda was talking about future work, and we have a lot of it. So FAO is gonna be the primary committee, it's gonna be dealing with the budget process, so that's going to be, that's gonna take up quite a lot, a lot of time, especially given the really aggressive timeline, so many meetings, I'm guessing, during the fall are gonna be devoted to budget process. In addition to that, we're gonna be looking at the bond work, maintenance issues, we're gonna continue to look at transportation and Nutrition Services, we're gonna have, the FAO is gonna be doing the audit function as well, and then a whole bunch of other things on top of that, so we're gonna have a, it's gonna be a busy year.
Any other committees with anything to report, or Moses, do you have a, can't wait to the start of the school year report?
Well, lately I've just been working on developing a Super SAC system or structure because in the past few years, to my understanding, it's been kind of lost. Last year, to my knowledge, we, we didn't meet with the superintendent formally, sometimes he would just stop by and, you know, we'd have a discussion, but there wasn't any, you know, monthly meeting, so a structure there, and so, what I've just kind of asking and wondering is like, what is like the purpose that the board was envisioning when they implemented Super SAC, because for like the Budget Review Committee or like D-Back, like they have stuff that they work with, and Super SAC last year, we didn't have really anything to work with, so we didn't know what you guys wanted, like, do you guys want it to just be like a discussion, we sit down and ask questions to superintendent, and he answers them, or like, we complain, like, it's a complaint to him, like, every month, so, we, I just wanna know like where the envision of Super SAC is, and so that I can build that structure with my members or systems so that we can effectively communicate well with the superintendent, the advice to be given. And then, we've just been working on the PPS Student Union, because on the webpage, there is something in regard to the Student Union, but there's nothing in policy about the Student Union, so right now I've just been reaching out to the ASB presidents from all the nine high schools, and we haven't formally met yet, but hopefully at the beginning of the school year, I'll be able to set up a meeting with everyone, and meet with them, and hopefully get middle school level involved somewhere in that. And then we're just working on clarifying priorities that we want to accomplish or voice student opinion on for the school year.
Thank you.
So, so how might we as a board surface juicy issues that we would wanna toss your way? I mean, I hear, I hear you kinda asking, hey, give us, give us something to chew on.
Yeah, so what I had initially thought of, I did, I wasn't informed that the board wanted to address issues or have us review issues, but that's something that like we wanna look into, and like changing it from like superintendent to like the board and superintendent review council, we certainly can. What I was envisioning or looking for at the beginning of every month, that the board like supplied like a packet or like topics that he wants us to review, and then at the end of the month, that we have a formulated presentation to present to him, and then he gives us another topic or packet full of information. And then between those weeks, we have, break up into committees and then meet to formulate that presentation and then present that to him. And of course, there's urgent matters that happen in the district, so any urgent matters that he wanted us to review, I was envisioning would directly go to the executive board within Super SAC, which is me and then Anna Kim that you guys met last week, and then Nick Paisler, who's from Cleveland, which I don't believe you guys have met, but has sat on Super SAC for two years now, and so, yeah, but I'm still developing and formulating that structure to hopefully propose to you guys at some point.
Seems to me it should go all three ways, you know, you, you guys should have things that you originate, that you want to work on, and that we can help you push forward, and then we have things that we bring to you, everybody keeps that in mind in their committee work, and then also the superintendent has things that he will bring to you, and he, I know, has had a lot of opportunity to work with students on developing policy and programs in the past, so that would be a great place for you to start to ask him what structures he's used to really integrate students in decision-making.
And I know you will be an active member of Teaching and Learning, you're on that committee as well, so we'll, we'll keep you busy, and that'll be part of the process too, of keeping Super SAC, and from your perspectives on those as well, giving us guidance.
Yeah.
So, excited.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're now gonna consider the business agenda, and it says we're gonna do that at eight o'clock.
That's not applied that much.
Yes, so the board has the revised Resolution 5498 before them, which has been posted online. Initially, there was an indication that there may be some items pulled from the business... Do you have it, Director Sparza Brown, or if you'd like it?
I don't have it. Do we have the revised?
But I wanna thank staff for some timely answering of several questions that board members had, so there's not, we're gonna consider the full, the full business agenda, and so thank you to staff for quick turnaround on some answers that board members had, and I'm also gonna just flag that there's some interest in, some of the contracts have built-in performance metrics, and board members may ask for those after we approve, like, we're gonna move ahead with approving, but that some people, there may be some contracts where we wanna see performance metrics. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt the business agenda?
Shall I move?
Director Anthony moves, and Director...
Second.
Bailey seconds?
I'll give it to Mike.
Okay. And Director Rosen seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No.
No public comment, is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Director Moore?
Just, just one comment, that, yeah, the staff response to questions was great, and I much appreciate it. I, I just feel like it would be helpful if, if we got these contracts earlier on. These are coming right before the start of school, and they're really time-sensitive, so I think if we could try to either space them out or do them earlier, I think that would be helpful. And this agenda includes 25 different contracts, took a while to get through them all, but I will say, it was much appreciated that there was a link to all the contracts on the website, right underneath the board materials, so that was great. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Director Sparza Brown?
I think they would be for Director Trong.
Would you like to...
There you are, hello.
Could you, would you be willing to come up and answer a question?
Yes.
Great, one of them is on the Greenwood Publishing Group, and it says K5 Literacy Adoption Resources and Professional Development. My question there is, it also says special class exemption, what does that mean? It's on page five of the business agenda.
Could you have the, do you want me to see a copy of them? Yes, I'm sorry, we don't, we don't, I don't have the copy of page five. I have the front page, but we're gonna look it up right now, so sorry.
I can cancel that question.
Why don't you come forward?
Is it copyright material?
Mm-hmm. Great.
So, the special...
So, could you, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Emily Court, and it's Director of Purchasing and Contracting.
Oh, great.
Thank you. So, special class... So special class procurements are listed in our public contracting rules. They're board-approved class exemptions from our normal, our standard procurement requirements set out in the rules. And so the one that is applicable here is called copyrighted material and creative works. And that applies to copyrighted materials and creative works that are available from only one source. So a lot of these sort of curriculum-type materials are available from one source. They usually come with a sole source letter verifying if that's true. And so that exemption applies.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a list of class exemptions that the board has approved over time and have been incorporated in our public contracting rules.
Okay, thank you. So that means you don't have to go through an RFP process or something like that?
That's right.
Yeah.
Or a quote process or whatever other kind of procurement process that would normally apply, you can directly negotiate those contracts.
Okay, great, thank you. Then my next question is the ESTRAITA contract, which is for the dual immersion program. So I'm wondering how that interfaces with the literacy, the K12 or the K5, five literacy adoption? So is there a completely separate strand of materials in dual-language classrooms? I guess I'm, I'm still not even clear of, of the balanced literacy adoption and its impact on dual-language programs or...
And so that we have really a long discussion on this and this is also why we moved to this book source publisher because they are able to provide us with more Spanish version and other languages. And I'm going to ask Dr. Locker to address this because she has worked closely with also Debbie on the adoption.
Good evening.
So this was ESTRAITA asking about that.
Yep. So when we look at the, at the approach to both the K5, so you probably recognize me from the 612 language arts adoption as well. So when we look at the partnership between the English language arts adoption and we look at the dual-language immersion, so this is the, when we think about the components of the English language side of it, we're trying to be very responsive and intentional about making sure that we also have the dual-language side of it as well. So that's what the ESTRAITA is providing.
Because they're quite, two completely different kind of methodologies, instructional approaches, so I'm still, I think this could be a really good topic to go into more in-depth. And I'm a little concerned about the expenditure at this point without really understanding how it fits in with the philosophy of the balanced literacy. But again, it would be helpful to have them earlier.
Sure.
So that we could have more thoroughly discussed how the pieces fit together.
Sure, and we're, and we're happy to provide a detailed response that would explain that in a way that makes sense and looks at the partnership between the, both the partner languages and English.
Yeah, because I'm very familiar with that program. But again, I think that the methodology is really different than what you're doing on the English side, so.
We can definitely provide you with a response for that question.
That's it. Any other questions? Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
And answering the questions.
Thanks.
Thank you, Emily, as well.
Thank you.
So we've got a motion, it's been seconded. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by...
Mr. President.
I'm, I was just going to wrap it up.
Sorry.
The business, but thank you. The business agenda is approved by a six to zero vote with the student rep voting...
Yes.
Yes. So this meeting is...
Seven, I think we're seven now.
Oh, seven, excuse me. You threw me off. Seven, we started at six. Okay, I'm going to correct the record that the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with the student rep voting yes. The meeting is now going to be adjourned and the, and the board will now move to the Willamette Conference Room for an executive session. The continuation, we went into a re... Continuate, it's a continuation of the executive session that we started before the board meeting.